Good evening. I would like to call to order the March 7th, 7th Annual School Committee Meeting, about 6:32 in. We used to start at 7:00. In years, we'd start school committee meetings at 7:00 and now it seems so odd to be starting after 6:00. Welcome, everyone. I will begin the meeting with public participation. If anyone has anything. Okay, same none. I would entertain a motion for us to go into executive session to come back out into public.
I make a motion for us to get into executive session to return to public. Pursuant to NGL Chapter 30A, Section 21, agreement of this strategy with respect to collective bargaining contractual negotiations with our nutritional services director at Silver Lake Education Association. Also under NGL Chapter 30, Section 21A7, comply with their act of the authority of any general or special law for the approval of our executive session minutes from February 8, 2024, and February 15, 2024, until repentable insatia.
Okay, very good. Go ahead, Jason.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Lucas.
Yes.
Jen.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Jeanne.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
And myself, Celia. All righty, folks, we will be back shortly. Are you guys online?
I'm happy to speak.
Okay.
So currently, the Dennech in Clinton has a relationship with the Silver Lake Director of Food Services. She oversees our kitchen. She also has a staff member that works that kitchen. With the separation of how we pay employees based upon where they work, we had a question of whether or not we could continue that relationship between Silver Lake and the Dennech. And we received an opinion from the USDA, but we also received one from DCE themselves, who's required of any of the changes we've seen. And they said that they are comfortable with the relationship being maintained as they are, keeping that employee under the guise of Silver Lake and also keeping that revolving fund house within Silver Lake as well. I will not make the motion, but I would appreciate a motion from the Silver Lake Regional School Committee to continue that relationship.
I will make motion that we continue the relationship as is with the Dennech employee, who was part of Silver Lake.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it on behalf of my town. And also on behalf of the employee who serves my students at the Dennech. Even though she is a Silver Lake employee, she is extremely special to the children of that school in my community.
Thank you. Okay, number four.
As the committee knows, we are in the process of separating some programs that had been run in Silver Lake in the elementary schools. And in one specific case, there is a Kingston employee who should be categorized as a Silver Lake employee. This person is currently categorized as a special education clerk. In light of her job responsibilities, we believe that she would be most accurately categorized as an administrative assistant to the principal under the SLEA Support Staff Contract. In consultation with our labor attorney, we've drafted a memorandum of agreement that we would like to share with the association and this person. And so I would ask the committee to consider whether they grant permission, give me permission to act on your behalf as your agent and to meet with the association of the employee.
I entertain a motion to approve the change to administrative assistant to the principal of preschool as presented by David.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Very good. Okay, approval of minutes from February 8.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from our February 8, 2024 meeting.
Second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? All righty, our retainer agreement for our legal counsel services.
In your package tonight, you'll see a one-year retainer agreement with Dupree Law Offices. And the monthly amount is included in that retainer agreement. I am recommending that we continue working with Dupree Law Offices and Attorney Russell G. Beck and Attorney Kimberly Roach in the board, as they have provided us with a great deal of assistance with school community related issues.
I value the quality of service and opinions and support we get from, Russell's firm. I truly do. Is there a motion to, any further discussion on that?
Agree with your call. And I will make a motion that we continue services with Dupree Law as presented.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Mark, you and I?
Aye.
Okay. All right. All right, the PAC, the collaborative agreement. So Amy's actually at the PAC meeting tonight. Hopefully, we won't see too many more conflicts. But in order for us to continue, and chime in, Jill, certainly we'd like, in order for us to continue our participation in the collaborative, there is an agreement that needs to be reviewed and voted and signed.
Yes. And the chair would sign on behalf of the committee, assuming that the proposal is agreeable to the committee.
So I was on board of the Pilgrim Area Collaborative. And in addition to having some separate classroom spaces for students that may need services that we can't provide within the confines of Silver Lake, Halifax, or the Kingston, they also have extended school day programs, in-house services called PACES, where trained special ed, OTTT, go in their homes and help parents work with their special needs children. They also provide PD opportunities for teachers as well. The relationship with PAC has been a very two-way road. As a matter of fact, last year, they had a surplus at the end of the year and they gave money back to their member towns instead of spending that money somewhere else. So I would make a motion that we continue to be part of the Pilgrim Area Collaborative and accept any changes set forth in their agreement.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on that?
Does it be motioned as presented by PAC? There was a script, or can it be?
Yeah, it does not have to be a script.
Yeah, I did, yeah. Oh, no, I asked the same question myself.
Good evening. At this time, we are concluding the high school parent-teacher conferences. Thank you to all who came tonight. Have a good evening.
How do I say this? It's like a subtle way of reminding them I'll leave.
I love parent-teacher conferences. I miss those days. Sorry to interrupt your motion. Is there a second? Second? Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you, folks. I will execute that. All righty, principals' reports.
Hi, everyone. Our teachers, both at Silver Lake, the high school and the middle school, both were able to have an amazing amount of time on Tuesday and this afternoon to work on some of their common assessments and their backhand work. PA was still on, sorry about that. And while this week was a wonky week, we used it to our advantage. And we had, Amity Ambassador at the middle school had an interesting game show that they planned for the students around, what not to do and what to do. They had a great time. And I just want to also, I can't invite you because we also have a meeting next Thursday, but the student staff doctorate game will be held next Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. There's also a district-wide instrumental concert at the high school. So we're excited for both of those events. And generally, I will be inviting you, but we have another meeting. So I want to just make it public. Thank you. I do not have a field trip request any longer, so you can just cross that off.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to start off with two donation requests. There's a list of books provided in your digital folder from Kingston Public Library. If they would like to donate, our librarians and guides would be happy to accept, accrue. And then we also have a Matria, Buick, Catalan, GMC from Matria and Rainham. If you learn Rainham, we would like to donate the vehicle to ask for parts for donation. They're on a loaded program, and in both cases, you certainly send a thank you out.
Any motion for those donations?
Motion to approve the donation of the books from the Kingston Public Library.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept the car from Matria dealership as well. Also, second.
Any further discussion? Same none. We should send out a thank you as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So Connor, we're on a three-day student council retreat right now. So in this place is Kira Ethea. She's going to give the student updates. I'm going to step back and read a little bit of her.
Good evening, everyone. I'm thinking this girl is a kind of invention. My name is Kira Ethea. I drop more here at the high school, and I'm also a member of student council as a group. I'm filling in tonight Connor with leading our delegation at the state leadership conference delegate. He hates to miss his meeting, but he is lucky with his update to present for all of you. So with that being said, I am very happy to be here with you tonight to recap student activities during the month of February and looking ahead to upcoming events for March. February was busy month as usual for students at the high school. We celebrated many events, achievement in achievements last month, with one being our unified celebration. This week, celebrated our differences across several fun gaming days that encouraged inclusion. Students and staff participated in large numbers, showing our incredible inclusive environment. Whether it was cultural heritage, personal identity, or just pride in being part of the lake, our school was truly battling with energy. The month of February also marks the end of the winter sports season. We are very proud to know too that both our girls' basketball and girls' hockey teams made their respective state tournaments. This is incredible accomplishment for both schools. Regardless of their performances or athletes, however, all of our winter sports teams catered to us with their efforts and their sportsmanship. We now look ahead to the upcoming spring sports season. Our spring athletes looking forward to return to class. Here at the high school, we also welcomed, over the course of summer days, current eighth grade students and their parents who are part of our CTE program. And we opened the house to learn more about the high school. Both staff and students and staff welcomed these future students and their families, ready to answer any questions or concerns they may have. We're looking forward to welcoming the class of 2028 back to the high school for Step Up Day in the spring. As we turn the calendar over to the month of March, we have several exciting events for the students. Over the course of the month, we will host a district-wide music concert to celebrate our choir and band students from grades seven to twelve. Since March can traditionally move slowly for students, we are also planning for a school-wide spirit week in the spirit of the upcoming March Vals basketball tournament, at the main March Mania. This event should bring a fun twist to daily school life. I did want to update the committee and Miss Fergie specifically that the student group Connor is working with is continuing to work on budget proposal in the future. He hopes to update you further at April's meeting. Finally, Connor, as a student representative of this committee, wanted to put into context the situation for you tonight. Under committee, you will be attempting to approve a budget during one of the most difficult and complex fiscal years ever. All of you would love to share with the ladies and gentlemen from all students to please exercise careful consideration of your choices in action to cut out support certain programs. Always weighing benefits for both students and staff alike. And that at the end of my update for you tonight, I would like to.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, are you?
I'm sorry.
May I address our student representative?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Could you please convey to Connor that next week, we will be having another budget discussion on Thursday evening? And if he's available to attend, that his presence would be valuable to that discussion. Thank you very much for all the updates. I hope March Madness is as much fun as you guys can make it. It's a real moment, remember, that can help some of our kids who don't really want to come to school that day get out of bed in the year. So I appreciate you guys for making this school the place kids want to be. So thank you for that.
And what I would add is, at the core of our mindset and actions and thought process embedding of the budget, the very core heart of that discussion are you students and the staff and the quality of education. That's central to why we're here and it's central to what we try and achieve and guard with our budget discussions and our final budget. And thank you so much for, again, giving us that wonderful update.
Well, I think that's a great segue into our next topic, to high school, as we think about how we can better support our students. And so I'm excited to introduce you to the co-chairs of a working group that has been working hard at a review of our bell schedule for the last couple of years now. Craig Murray, who's one of our science teachers, and Tyler Lepaska, who's our music and art coordinator, are going to join me up here. There's a copy of the presentation in the folder. We'll also have it up here for you. And just as promised, we want to share a little bit more background information behind the generated conversations, even consider a potential schedule change. We're going to share the driving force behind it, the obstacles that we need to overcome, and then talk to you a little bit about feasibility study that we're conducting. So, Tyler, if you'd like to come, come join me. I'll be grand lights. I was going to be there, though. To keep me from talking.
All right, so currently at the high school, we have a seven-day rotating schedule, where we drop one class a day. It's pretty standard, but the one thing that makes it a bit different than most schedules is we have some new rotations within that seven-day schedule. So it's a big part of being a comprehensive high school and having VoTE programs within our school. It is a functional schedule. I won't say it's well-balanced schedule. So these discussions started about much before my time, so 2014 or 15?
Long before COVID. We have had a scheduled committee reviewing the bell schedule for probably about 10 years.
Yeah. So the first formal kind of action item from something outside of our school was the NEAS report in 2021. So these are two goals that I pulled out of the NEAS report, the summary report. So goal number four is really a student-centered goal relating to our schedule. So the school continued to develop organizational practices to meet the learning needs of each student and examine schedule practices to ensure that all students receive appropriate intervention strategies to support their academic, social, and emotional success. So a big part of our schedule now is, we are obviously trying to do that on every level with every student, but we do not have dedicated time within our schedule to do that currently. Our second one is goal number five. This is more a teacher-centered goal. This is really to, don't plan to provide time and financial resources to enable research-based instruction, professional growth, and development implementation and improvement of school programs, basically giving time for teachers and administrators to work to improve our schools. Like we're trying to do on a daily basis, but we don't currently have time to do it in the school schedule. So, thank you. So here's our new goals. Wanted to closely follow the NEAS goals that I just showed you previously. So add some academic support time to the school day, ensure all students receive appropriate intervention strategies to support their academic, social, and emotional growth. We think that is paramount to the success of our students, and we want to add time, like scheduled time throughout the day to do that. Number two is a teacher one, to add time for teacher collaboration, maximize research-based instruction, professional growth, development, implementation, like we talked about previously. Three or four are really the committee's recommendations, obviously our feedback from our current schedule. So simplify our day-to-day schedule. Currently, we have a very awkward rotation schedule. It works with our VoTE programs, but it is not, I can't tell you where I'm going to be on next Wednesday.
This has come through survey, both surveying students, parents, and staff on the complexities of the rotating schedule. That is a request from students and families for a more simple schedule.
Yeah, so that's our first kind of additional recommendation. And our second one is to really increase the length of our class periods. We didn't set out with a goal of what that will be, but certainly the longer instruction we have with our students, the better and improved our instruction could be.
And I might just interject there. We spent most of last year, we sort of discerned that our best option might be a five-period school day with the class size in between the block and the minutes that we have now. Currently at a 56-minute, we sort of came to the decision that a 65-minute class period would be ideal, but we cannot make a schedule work with CTE, the rotation, with the number of teachers in our schedule that teach six periods with all the different numbers. We tried every configuration to make a five-a-day schedule work, and it's not very feasible.
For over a year, so that.
We were really hard to make that, and it doesn't work.
Yeah, so what we came to together as a group is we really can do, we can do a six- or seven-day schedule, six or seven classes within a day, or we can go to four within a day. But five is like the magic number that doesn't work with our construction of our school and our programs. So with that, we can look at the challenges. So big one is our CTE programs. So the actual curriculum requires two to three consecutive blocks. So that's a large part of our awkward rotating schedule now is that five and six have to be next to each other at all periods of time. So we can switch them, but we can't move them around very much. And also, our CTE programs themselves have very important needs throughout a day. So our early childhood education has a preschool, kids' time at a certain point in the day, and they leave at a certain point in the day. And we need our kids to be there to support that. Our culinary revolves around the lunch schedule. So those make it difficult. The three, two and three are really just structural things. Like if we change something in the contract, we need to renegotiate that contract. SLEA has been open to that, but that would be a process we'd have to go through. And then the last one was kind of how we came to today, that we effectively have finalized our school's budgets earlier this year, and any impact to that would be difficult to change schedule. So we tried to create a schedule that worked with all of these challenges. So that kind of leads to our recommendation. So we would like to pursue changes to the schedule for next year that may meaningful change for our school community, but do not require renegotiation or major budget conservations. Our recommendation is to return to the four-class-a-day block schedule as currently in the SLEA contract, and it was last season 2005, 2006. So this is pending a full feasibility review that we can actually implement this in our school with our current situation of our programs and our teachers.
Just returning to a schedule we previously ran that is already in the contract that we got.
So this is what it would look like. It would be a red day, silver day schedule, 86-minute classes, four blocks in a day. You would see your classes every other day. So I'm a physics engineering teacher. I would see my class every other day throughout the school year. The big change here is that we're going from seven-period schedule to an eight-period schedule that frees up a period within the day, that we have some flexibility to add some of the support that we would like to add for our students. So some of those students will take an eighth-period class. We will happily allow them to do that. And then some of those students will take a directed study so that we could offer some support to them within the school day. Currently, you would have to remove them from a class to do that or require them to stay outside of the confines of the school schedule. So that was important to find some student support time during the day. And we are doing that by adding an eighth period for that to be.
And I might interject here. We spent much of last year looking at adding the, like a 20-minute block for the whole school to be available. That's what some of the other towns have done around here. A, that broke up the contiguous periods for CTE for one, so that meant we really could only put it at the start of the day and the end of the day without having it not be something that all students could access because they would be off at a carpentry site, and therefore you don't have access to support if the bus is already gone, right? Or also, some of the feedback is that some of the schools, Craig came from another district, some of the schools that have had those where their whole school is off at the same time are actually looking to move away from that model, that there are some school management challenges of having the whole school having more free time at the same time, more unassigned time. So we did look at that. That was hard to schedule, but in our hindsight, it has been that that's maybe not the best. Some of the schools that have done that are moving away from that.
All right, so this is what it would look like from a teacher perspective, a school perspective. So our five-class teachers, so many of our teachers are, teach five classes and many of our teachers teach six classes. So this is part of our difficulty. So a five-class teacher would teach their five classes over two days. They would have prep slash professional time each day. So I think it's 43 minutes of prep time and 43 minutes of professional times. How does broken down in the contract? And then you would get a full period duty every other day. And that duty could be a lot of things, but what we expect it to be is really student-level support. So either with students in a directed study or with students in a STEM lab or humanities lab, which is a little bit different than our current layout of our duties. And we think we're getting positive, a positive change. Our sixth-class teachers have always been a challenge, finding a way to schedule them equitably in school. And now they'd be able to have a more consistent schedule and teach three classes a day and have their prep slash professional time within that day. Professional time is the new thing that we don't have now.
It's in the contract.
Yeah, this attacks our, like, our second goal of providing time for teachers, administrators to move our school positively forward. It would give us time within the day to work on these things. Like, for instance, have we donated my prep time to this committee? But not everybody is going to do that every single time. And this would give us time, scheduled time, to do things like this. So that's what that professional time is. That would be 43 minutes per day, too. All right, so here's why we need some time for our teachers. Miss Coe pulled this out for us. This is just a snapshot of professional time allotted to the high school versus the middle school. And you can see very minimal hours. So basically, two hours a month to improve our school and our practices. And all of that is scheduled within meeting times that we currently have. So our faculty and our department meetings. So that's not the only point on all of those agendas. Whereas we think a more feasible schedule would allow us more time to work on these things. So the middle school obviously has that. It's a positive for their school and their school environment. All right, what would the students' academic support block be? That would look very different for each student. So if they are taking an eighth period, say they're a high-choo student, want to take an extra class, they will have time within their schedule to do that. If they are a student in C T E, they may choose to take a foreign language or a wellness class that they normally could not have taken.
Or art or music or any other electives that C T E students are currently exempt from. They, they can fit it in two times in their four years. So I have found from this proposal, so a lot of interest in more students. I think we've been actually surprised in some of the, we'll get to the feasibility, but the amount of students who would like to take an additional class. Now that does become staffing challenging, but we do have some space in our schedule. And then.
Yeah, our students are really like, giving that a period, we thought they would be like, oh, directed study. And a lot of them were like, oh, I can take Spanish. This is a wonderful thing. So other students would take a directed study, which we also fully support, especially the students that, that need support time within the day. And what would that look like? So first off, it would be a supervised directed study. You would go to a room with a teacher in the room supporting you. And within that time, you could do many different things. It wouldn't be scheduled upon you. It might be recommended and something that the school kind of used that time for. But what that could look like is tier-two interventions. So a standard student could get content-specific support. This would be our STEM lab, our humanities lab. We've got a lot of different ideas of what that could be, but a place within the school where students can get academic support from a teacher within the school day.
And that would fall under the duty category of a five-period teacher.
Yeah.
Which is we're the only place where we have resources. It's a, it's a reallocation of resources, right? A schedule change is a reallocation of resources. And we aren't going to have tons and tons and tons of more classes, but we do have, every five-period teacher teaches a duty period. I mean, there's assigned a duty period. And that is where we, that's where we're doing things now. And that's where we're doing all of this work now. That's where the current, there's been an M-CAS remediation for some of the sciences. But I think those, all of those things could happen in a, in the lab situation.
Yeah, this would just set up a more formal situation where they could get support within the school day academically. And so that's content-specific for any student. And then our students who need M-CAS remediation, previously we offered that after school. It's very difficult for a lot of those students to make. So now we've, we've offered it during school, but since we have no time for that, we need to pull them from other classes to offer services like that. So now we would have time within the schedule to do that, time within their schedule to do that. You could also do the standard things you would do within a school, right? Make up a test, a quiz. You could make up a lab and STEM lab because you could have access to the, to the materials. And you wouldn't have to stay up to school to do that, which again is difficult for some of our students to do.
That was also some of the feedback on the 20-minute blocks, like not being enough time to take a test, right? If the kid has to, if you only have 20 minutes, they have to come three days in a row to do little sections of their test to get it made up. That in this schedule where we would have teachers supervise, you could leave a test in the lab to be made up while the students have time. So for students with excessive absence or, because what our model now is you, to get caught up, you miss more things.
Or you stay afterwards, very difficult for many kids. So obviously we'd offer our other students support. And this is things our kids already do, but again, they miss academic classes to do them. Meeting with their guidance counselors, adjustment counselors. A lot of our social-emotional learning programs are, are fit within the day, but there's no real time for them within the day. So this is our, we're teachers, right? So we want to make sure we're, I'm an M-CAS teacher. I teach introductory physics. I want to make sure I have time with my kids within the day to cover the content we need to. So this is our investigation on how our hours of classes would change, going from seven classes to eight classes. So obviously there's going to be a reduction in time per class because you're adding a class. So if you look currently on the top, first thing I want you to know is that red line across is what they get in hours per year. One drastic thing is depending on where you are within the schedule, you get many different hours. So period four gets, what is that, 12 more hours than period?
23 versus 11. 23 is the most, right? And that, that's because of lunch. That's because of lunch block. That's because 56-minute periods don't.
Become 65-minute periods during lunch.
Right, so it's timing to do with lunch. Lunch block classes have to be longer to get four 22-minute lunches in. So when you go to the class schedule, you can get four 22-minute lunches in without making the class longer.
So it simplifies the whole thing. Our day-to-day classes would all be the same length. We would meet all of them equally. So that's why you see that 126 hours per class. Yes, that would be a reduction in each per class time. But if you look on the right, our actually student time on learning would go up because they would have less transitions throughout the day. They would be in a classroom for more hours of the school day. And we would be able to support them so that they're in their academic classes doing the things they need to do for more time. So although we would be reducing the per individual class, we would be increasing their time on learning throughout the year.
So last one.
Yeah, kind of overview. Benefits of a schedule change. We are achieving our goals, maybe not perfectly, but we're achieving all of them. We are adding support, academic support time for our students within the day so that they can have, they can get there without a lay bus, without a ride home from mom or dad. We're adding professional time for our teachers within the day. We'll get back to that in a second. We're going to simplify our day-to-day schedule. I would know what my schedule would be next week. Currently our students, my students literally take out their phone at the end of each period to find out where they're going next period. That's how they do it. So it simplifies day-to-day schedule. It would increase our length of class periods. As a physics teacher, I'd be able to run a lap within a period, which I usually cannot do. So that was another one of our main goals. Things we're still working on. We need to make sure that we can do this as a school and cover all the things that we want to cover and have adults, where there need to be adults within the school day. So we are running a feasibility study currently. We're collecting class sign-ups.
Yeah, course requests, I calculated the statistics as a department head very much in the process. So the students are making their course requests for next year. We felt very strongly that we wanted to do, not a, not a lock guess of what kids might take, but what would our actual students next year choose? And we are giving a degree of choice in here. You could choose for an academic support block during the day or you could choose an eighth class. And we really, without asking them, have no idea where it would fall. We pretty much need it to be 50/50, I think, for it to work. If you were asking me, we need to cover half of those eighth periods by fifth-period duty teachers. And we can cover about half of them by spots in enrollment, by fire classes, because I can serve more kids in that class without enrollment. There are kids that will take those. Language classes is one of our smallest departments right now because C T E can't take them. Those classes, if people were given an eighth day, those might, more kids would take a language and we have spots for those kids. So we have done the feasibility study. There were, we know how many seats we have unused. We know, we, we, we just don't know what the kids would choose.
Yeah, we've done the feasibility study as best as we can and now we are getting real data to check it.
So our coordinators, as we're collecting this data, are going to make bold schedules. We're going to continue in case this doesn't work, it's not feasible, we don't have the staffing, it doesn't get, it's not as well-received as we think it could be, right? We've all been doing this a long time and we think we need the change. We think the pace of the current schedule, there is, is, is pretty intense for everybody. We just go, 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 go all the time. When you need help, you get pulled out and then you miss more. And we would like to try to change that. So that if you're a kid who needs more help, you can take a period in the day where you know that that help is going to be available for you. And if you're a kid that doesn't need during the day extra support, then you're the person who's going to be able to take, both, you know, take an extra elective that hopefully we can serve you or take double your language or keep that in your schedule. So we're making bold schedules. The coordinators have agreed to the double task of, we're still making the schedule. If this doesn't fly, we'll keep the schedule we have now. And if we have major budget cuts, it might make it even less feasible. So we need that computer teacher because we need those elective classes for this to work, right? But we're going to do bold schedules and we're going to see if we can serve it. What does it do to teacher duties? Do we have no teachers left for hall duty? What, what, like, we're prioritizing student support over hall duty, you know, duties, right? We'll find other ways, right? But we don't know. So we're, we're doing the work to make sure we can.
I do think schedules are weird. There is no perfect one. And we're definitely not claiming that this would be a perfect solution to every single problem. Because there is no schedule that's a perfect solution to every single problem. So we think it's a reasonable path to move forward that would improve the day-to-day lots of our academic support for our students.
And I will say, like, we've looked at our neighborhood towns. I know Duxbury, for example, has made a change to their schedule the last four years in a row. They weren't afraid, we didn't, they didn't get it perfect the first time, right? You make a change. We know this might not be everything we want to put into our schedule, but we, we think we should. We, the schedule committee recommends the change. And then we will see where there are shortcomings and then we will come back to the school committee next year to say, okay, we need X, Y, and Z to make this better or this didn't work and how can we review it?
I will say we have, I think it's fair to say that we have staff support of the change. Every student we've talked to through school counseling and just anecdotally is supportive of the change and we think it's a positive step toward for our school.
And I will say one other thing, the one thing that is different from the 2005, 2006 is we are proposing no rotation. And that is a difficult, we're about 50/50 on that, but in terms for ease of what we want to do and also the consistency and the scheduling of our programs, that is the easiest thing for this year. That may be something we revisit, but for C T E, for some of the different needs, we're proposing it's a pretty fixed schedule for consistency and reliability and no one's expected. Questions?
So 20 years ago, we opted out of this into what we have now. What were the arguments in favor of opting out of this in favor of what we have now?
It was, I know, what, I can tell you the biggest thing we lost is that professional time. And I, I'll be very blunt. I don't know that we were using it. I don't know that we were using it the way we needed to in 2005 and 2006, but I can tell you that what's being asked of us as teachers for our departments, as a department leader, for the common assessments, for collecting the data, for having data-driven decisions, for all of the things that we're being asked to do to make the changes, we can't do that without the professional time. That's what we lost. We lost the professional time.
Yeah, so historically, the change before was actually driven by the school committee at the time because the perception was that teachers were not working hard enough or working enough during the day, that there was too much downtime.
And so it was, I mean, and I know as a teacher during that time, I have been here, I taught through that. I mean, obviously in the specialist subjects, we prefer the long, the long blocks are great for my content. The long grades are, long blocks are great for science. We do know that, that data has not changed since the 90s. There are some classes that would prefer repetition for shorter block and daily. But more than not, our feedback, the teachers felt a longer block would allow time for the different, we're being asked to differentiate. We've eliminated levels, which means you need to be able to get around to this group and that group because they're doing something different over here than they're doing over there. I really do think that these longer blocks would, would lead well to the kinds of project-based learning and individualized choice lessons that are happening in our classrooms.
Kelly, is it not correct too that it's a little bit more demanding on teaching load? And if I'm not mistaken, some of the reasons this was banned in the last time had to do with that? Because you don't need quite as many teachers to fill our current schedule in an eighth-period schedule, because kids can take more classes?
We never have allowed students to opt for a directed study. So that, I think that's the place that's tied to what John is saying, even now. Right, we have 235 kids in a directed study second semester right now. You can't choose that. They're only, they're only, you can only get a directed study if we can't serve it to you, right? We didn't have a class that we could give for you or you find a way to advocate, parents advocate, teachers advocate, guidance advocates for time during the day. So to, to, to take a directed study rather than a class. And, and the students who get, there are plenty of kids who would, students have been, have not been allowed to make that choice, to have that during the school daytime. It's just something you sort of get maybe.
We would like it to be equitable to all students regardless of advocacy, students' support time within the day.
And so that, yeah.
No, go ahead.
So I was just going to say, so that change, we don't have the staff, we can't, we do not have the staff to get our kid an eighth class. That, you were completely right about that. If you're like, how are you going to have a class for everybody without any teachers? But what we're hoping is that we have the support staff to assist students that as a duty period, which where teachers would then be able and available to five-period teachers. Right, our six-period teachers don't have any extra time. And six-period teachers are art, music, special ed, C T E, wellness, gym, like we, that's the same as wellness. But we have a lot more of our staff, there are a lot more six-period teachers than you might think when you look down to it.
We're pretty evenly split.
That's almost half of our faculty, right? And that's just, that's a, that's a video secrecy in our schedule.
And one thing to point out too, for a lot of our six-period teachers, in order for them to get their contractual prep, once rotation, we're covering one of their classes. So every seven days, instead of having art, I have a direct-to-study or I have a sub in that class. So I'm losing that direct construction with my teacher because contractually, that's the only way that we can provide them a prep. So this would eliminate that as well. All of that would go away. I have my art teacher, every single time I'm supposed to have my art teacher. And then as a student, I have that option of, do I need that extra academic support? Or am I going to challenge myself? I'm going to add a role language, I'm going to take an elective. Or maybe I want to take another A P class? Or maybe I want to double up on math because I, you know, aspirations to be pre-med? So it's our, our students, more choice, but also that, we just talk about their mental health right now, right? Slowing things down, giving them an avenue to have any, any support that they need within the structural time of the day. Not expecting them to skip a math class to take that support. Not expecting them to stay after school if they have to work or if they had to get a meeting or somebody to help out, right? It's providing them everything they need within the bell schedule.
And the teachers on our committee, our, our committee was made up of many teachers. Many of them felt like our resources. So teachers have a duty period. And right now, no sitting checking passes at the bathroom during their duty period when they would be willing to sit in a writing lab and help a kid with their essay. So we'd like to use our resources in student support ways.
Yeah. I would say having two of my kids right now on I E Ps and seeing that they could spend 86 minutes in a classroom and not have to have the 20 minutes of, okay, I get to spend X amount of time in this class, but also I have to be pulled up for small group setting. And then they're being taken away from that teaching time that they could be there in the classroom and then going and utilizing, you know, what their resource for I E P. I mean, if they could spend 40-something minutes in a classroom and then utilize another 40 minutes in small group setting and with their I E P specialist, you might have more kids coming off an I E P because they have a little bit of a longer time in that classroom. That's just my personal from.
As a, as an adult in a classroom, I, I am feel the, the rat race a little. I could not imagine it from that perspective. So I agree.
And I think this opens up a different, a model that we haven't had here, which is getting support from a teacher that might not be your teacher, which is in some ways not ideal, but in some way, like my child went to a high school that had math lab and they knew in their directed study, they could just go to that space if they didn't understand their math homework. Whatever teacher was in the math lab would help them with it. It wasn't just like, my teacher stays after on Thursdays and, and in the 25 minutes that my teacher's after on Thursdays, there's 12 kids in the room from our four different classes. Like, our, we can improve, I think, our support models with some of this.
So for us, our next steps, and Elijah, if there are more questions, just to hear your opinion on our next steps. We are building two schedules right now. We have lots of experience during our remote hybrid year and practice building different scenarios. So I think that is actually one of the silver linings of the pandemic is that as a school, we shifted multiple times into different types of schedules and different types of rotations. rotations. And so that seems we're less fearful of change right now, and more we're embracing some of those changes that we had during that year. So it'll take, it'll take a few weeks to build all of these schedules. Typically, our timeline, we do course selections in March, try to have our schedule in place by June. We started that process a little bit earlier this year, so that we can start getting the data that we need. We're hopeful to have a turnaround by the end of April, fingers crossed, we're working on the clock on this. That would be our next step, to share with you our findings on whether or not this would be feasible for next school year. And if it's not feasible for school year, what are the roadblocks and what are the things that we need to focus on to get it back by 2020?
I have a comment to before.
Okay. Thank you. What happens if a student who probably shouldn't choose that eighth class chooses an eighth class or an elective over the study period? Because, I mean, I like, I like the concept of, especially with the conflict with CTE, those children having the option to have additional world language or an elective for the first time, but I guess I'm just wondering, can they be denied that?
Yeah, I think, I think in any schedule, students have the ability to make bad decisions with their schedule, like, taking five APs in a year is not something I would recommend to students, right? So regardless if it's seven or eight, so we, we have adults helping students to make good decisions on their schedules. Our guidance department makes their schedules with them for just this reason.
Parents sign off as well?
Yeah, so.
So there's an element of coaching there, so we.
I think you're right, but I think that happened in seven-period schedule as well. I think bad decisions can be made, or decisions that would not benefit students can be made in most schedules. And I think you're right that there's an important thing there, that we have to really make our students aware of where their needs are and where they can be best helped within our schedule, which is why our guidance council makes their schedule their done.
And so this year, we reverted back to our paper course selection process. We've done digital in 2021, and that really cut out a lot of the important conversations that were taking place, because everybody just went online, signed things up, yep, 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 signed off. So now our students are having conversations with every one of their teachers about course selections for next year, electives they should be aiming for, level they want, five or two. And so the counselors would then sort of be the end conversation to that, to say like, hey, let's take a look at your schedule. And then maybe they're going to coach that student to, maybe this isn't the best fit for you, let's look at something else. And then we're going to be able to talk.
Full disclosure, I did see that this week, since I have a question, so I appreciate that, and I saw that the teachers do sign off, which I think is great. Just one other question, I guess, in terms of feasibility, what happens if a student has like all four of their four classes, like, on one day? Like, is that, is now, now we're talking about if there's an absence, there's double the amount of work missed, double the homework expectations perhaps?
Yep.
Like, has that been?
We should hope that that spreads out.
That would be red.
Natural attrition. We have some chance to look over that, like, those of us, we look at the draft schedules, so we won't hit that for everybody. My students have been, my own personal kids have been in a four-block four-period a day every other day. It's at another school, and it does tend to balance out, okay, between gym and wellness.
Well, then again, the counselors, they go through, once a meeting is set, they pull up your schedule, like, wow, math, English, science, history, and one day, and then art course, let's, what can we move around? Let's move the maths to the other side of that rotation.
That's a good, that's a good thing for us to look at, but it does tend to balance. I mean, you might have one day that's harder than the others, but then, then, I mean, I even know, like, my own son, like, can I please stay home today? It's my easy day. And not that that's the best thing in the world, but it is, like, he's going to miss visit instead of math. Like, if you're making a tough decision, it can, it can be a wellness thing for kids to not overload them to make that kind of choice.
I, go ahead, Mark, and then I, before we close, I have a couple of questions.
I think you've got a lot of great concepts I'd support of making a change. My kids went to the previous schedule, so they didn't see anything wrong with it, why it would change. But the longer time, I support, my colleague said about the, my son would have loved to have, he had an accommodation for more time, and he had to be accommodated with an IEP where he wouldn't have to be, you know, in that long schedule. And as far as prepping for courses, you have two nights of homework before you see it again. So you can plan it on your easy day, you just need to do the homework early for the next day. I don't see that as a big issue, but I like the time on every week, and I like the fact that you put all the stuff together, you're booking that.
We have really been meeting for a long time. Before COVID, then we made two schedules during COVID, and then we really thought we wanted to go to a five-period a day, and we put all of our attention there with the whole school support block, and we hit roadblocks at the end with being able to provide six-period teachers and perhaps basically is something that we can fix.
Keeping the time in one block, you don't have all the time wasted going between classes. We all know that just makes the three to five minutes you put it together.
And the change in the no-rotation is actually from a lot of our special learners. That is the feedback, that some of our kids have the most anxiety, have the most needs, the consistent schedule is really, that tipped the scale for that.
Can I ask a question, then? I have a comment. The slide before this one had the, demonstrated the extra time that the students would have. And then you talk about 86-minute classes, but this, I think, is showing 65 and 64 minutes.
These are hours. So period one, so under block schedule, period one, we get 65 hours within semester one, 61 hours in semester two.
Okay, so that's, okay, obviously, those hours, that's how you come up with the 16. Okay, and those are minutes, okay.
The minutes were the previous.
If I could, before you make your comments, because I have questions that have to do with hours also.
Be my guest, yep.
So my two questions come from the realm of CTE and from IEP, right? So a lot of school districts moved from starting school after Labor Day to before Labor Day, to get those extra instructional dates on books prior to IEP testing. Are there any concerns about the amount of hours that your teachers and your students will have prior to IEP testing with this block schedule? My second question is, comprehensive high schools sometimes get teased by vocational high schools about the amount of hours that we give for CTE students. Would we still be fully complying with chapter 74 and an apartment with professional licensure for all of our programs under this new block schedule?
I think those are both great questions. I don't think we looked at the hours for an AP.
I've taught an AP in a block at a different school district, and you do have to teach differently, but you also have the time to teach differently. So it was AP physics, and in AP physics class, a quarter of your time should be lab-based instruction. And if you're doing 56-minute periods, that means you're building, breaking down labs repeatedly every week. Now we could run a lab in a day, and guess what? You're going to write that lab for next class. So do you have to, do you, are you leaning on them using their time outside of the classroom? In some cases, yes, for a variety of students, they would be required to make up some of this on their time, which is, which is a fair ask for those students. That's a good question, and it would affect our in-class students as well, because June 4, which is when my kids take their in-class, then that's when they need to be ready for it.
We'll do that, we'll do that data number dive.
I think you have to be aware of it and teach differently, so I think that's a valid question. Many schools teach, we live in block schedule, to accommodate that, but those teachers can do it.
Mr. Frazier on the CTE side, so we're currently looking at all the other local comprehensive high schools. I think we'd like what we have in terms of where our hours fall compared to most other schools in the area. I think we're closer to a regional VOK week on, week off than some of them want to admit when you add those hours up. There's a, there is a loss of time, a little bit, you know, as a trade-off here. Beyond just seeing your kids for one period, if you're a culinary arts student that meets for three periods a day, obviously, it's multiplying that difference of hours for a course by three, right, over the course of the year. So we've looked at that. We've also looked at a positive trade-off in some ways that we would be interested in for our kids that both have access to that other period in addition to now when we look at, if you're Tony Raffini, who's our outdoor carpentry instructor, that has a day that starts at 7:30, and you have three blocks with a junior carpentry student, you get to leave at 7:30, and you have to be back essentially for the last wave of lunch by, say, 12 o'clock. We've now created a much longer block of time for them to do their work, and even though it's an every-other-day model, we've got these longer blocks of time that allow clinical hours for an LA health student, our culinary program, there are benefits, I think, in a lot of our programs. Sometimes the student that diagnoses the automotive issue and pulls the brakes apart isn't always the kid that puts the brakes back together because of our wacky schedule, so we would have, I think, some more advantages there. But to answer your real question, we're still okay from an hour standpoint in terms of meeting all the state requirements that we would need to accomplish.
Thank you for both of those.
The final thing I would like to say, then, if anyone else wants to know, we can kind of move on. Having put two boys through the CTE program who then went on to four-year colleges, I liked your comment regarding the possibility of fitting in another elective or a language, because my boys were both able to take Spanish one year at the beginning of their high school career, but then I think the junior year summer, it was both of my boys, their junior year summer, had to take Spanish two at a local college in order to have the two years of language for four-year school, so.
I will say, of the feasibility study, the excitement from CTE kids to take electives has been almost the most unanticipated positive thing I've heard chirped about.
Yeah, I believe it. Any other questions or comments, folks?
Thank you all very much, and I just, yeah. These are our co-chairs of the committee, but the first slide, we go back to, I mean, this has been a team effort, a lot of teachers, union representation, student voice, parent involvement.
Every department.
All of our departments are represented, so it's a, we feel very proud of this. So now, our fingers are crossed that the numbers are in our favor, so we'll keep you posted. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
That, that.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time tonight.
Thanks. All righty, Director of Finance.
Thank you. I'm going to begin with the financial report. You have the financial report update in your packets. I am going to tell you that there are deficits in the food service, insurance, and special education lines. The budget for FY25 takes these into consideration, and I'm going to be meeting with Christine Healy tomorrow to just talk about how deficits have been dealt with in the past, and I'll have an update for you next week.
So we don't know what the health insurance, why the health insurance is so in deficit.
At this moment, I don't know why the budgeted amount for FY24 for the health insurance isn't covering the expenditures, correct?
Okay. I will make the motion to accept the financial report as presented.
I'll stick it.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, seen none of those in favor? Bye-bye.
For an update on the corrective action plan, so as you recall, I wrote a corrective action plan for the FY22 audit. The large portion of the corrective action plan requires documentation of the processes in the business office, and quite honestly, I've been up to my elbows in the budget, and I have the documentation done for how to pay, how to pay the withholding taxes, but there's things that will take time, and I've been a little short on time lately. So I will continue updating you on the corrective action plan. The E and D update, we received a letter from Department of Revenue back in January with a very harsh deadline. We have your, have your documentation in by February 15th. I want you to know that it was submitted on February 14th. It, we received some questions from DOR. The reports were revised on February 26th, and then February 28th, our E and D was certified, and that should have been shared with all of you. Any questions about the E and D?
Just for the record, we certified E and D at just above $1.5 million, correct?
Yes, $1,504,716.
Thank you very much.
The last thing on my update is the house doctor agreement, and so I want to talk a little bit about what a house doctor agreement is. If, if you think about all of the work that we do on our structures, on our buildings, and when the state decided to call this a house doctor, the word doctor was a good word to use, that if you think about a specialist, sometimes you can go to a specialist doctor, and all they do is cardiology, but sometimes there's a group of doctors that work together, and one does cardiology, and one does podiatry, or, you know, whatever their groups do. And so the house doctor is an engineering firm that encompasses many trades. So when we have a project to do with Silver Lake, instead of going out and saying, well, here's an engineer for HVAC, and here's an engineer for plumbing, and here's an engineer for roofing, or an architect for roofing, the house doctor is a kind of a one-stop-shop where they have multiple specialties. And so we have gone out to bid, we solicited requests for qualifications, they were due today. Our facilities director informed me that he received questions from, I think, 31 different firms, and, I can't remember how many we received. Mark, do you remember?
Nine.
Nine. So we received nine proposals that are going to be reviewed tomorrow, so when I see you again next week, the team that's reviewing the proposals should have a next steps, which will either be a recommendation for who to contract with for house doctor services, or a top three group of, that will be brought in for interviews.
So with the concept of the house doctor, we still do the final vetting and decision-making?
Yes. Okay.
I can add to that, just briefly, Paul, that we have the option to go outside the house doctor, we can compare the agreement that we, our Q that we put out is very flexible. I'm excited that nine people are willing to offer services of the flexibility that we still retain going forward.
Yeah, yeah, that's actually an excellent option to have in there.
And overall, we'll provide a little bit of a centralized overview of what we have going on at Silver Lake, so we can focus on the things that we, in the order that we need to prepare them to. So looking forward to it.
Mark, good, thank you.
That concludes my report. Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you. As you know, Tuesday was a professional development day, so like Principal Kwech talked about, teachers were engaged with common assessment work and curriculum alignment work, so that was a highlight, as well as Dr. Bernrissi, Michelle Boudreau, Amy Siderholm, and Valerie Carlson presented to our special education staff in the fall, that's as required, new IEP system, so to, the first step in that process. Our in-house experts presented to our special education staff to make sure that they were aware of the change and how we were going to implement, so we appreciate their leadership in leading that professional development. The week, the week before that, we also had some high school, middle school staff, Principal Kwech, Principal Gil, Colin as well, come over and participate in edge-up climber training, and essentially, that's a platform that helps to collect and visualize student achievement data all in one place. So on our strategy for district improvement, we have a goal of helping teachers to more easily access data about students and track their progress. So we have a system now that has students' grades, both current and past grades. So we have a system now that has students' grades, both current and past grades, standardized tests like the Star Reading that's given at the middle school, MCAS data, and attendance data, and so our hope is to train some people in-house this year, and then to be able to share it slowly with teachers over time, so that they really have one place that they can go to see all of the data about their students and make sure everyone's making all the progress that they want to see. So I would just say, very simply, it's like the 21st century version of the Q folder that used to exist in the main office, that teachers could walk down and check out how students were progressing, but, and now that there's so much more assessment data, it's hard to send people to, you know, five different platforms, so we're excited to be able to develop this tool to help teachers, help students. So we appreciate the high school, middle school staff that participated in that PD and helped us make progress toward this goal.
Sounds like a very efficiency.
We hope so.
Thank you. Superintendent Gill.
So since our last meeting, the central office has been working on updating revised elementary budgets, and with input from our school committees at each of our school committee meetings, we have updated the Silver Lake budget with new known information such as the health insurance changes, and prepay supplies, and the tech grant. So we will be detailing those when we present the next version of the Silver Lake budget as well. We have cross-checked all Silver Lake staff salaries, not only with our AGI director, but also with the principals. We have shared a preliminary special education cross-comparison with our chair and former school community member Gordon Andrews for review as well. We have contracted with Christine Healy to begin calculating costs. It was a request to build the budget as if there were no structural changes made. It would be an impossibility for Sarah to do both the current way and the old way, and so we have asked Christine to begin that work. We have cross-checked special education costs and have refined our circuit breaker estimates. We are being less conservative at the elementary levels based upon actual spending in '24, so we've had the time now to refine that data. Sarah and I have met with both Halifax and Kingston Town officials to help explain the changes that we were required to make and to answer questions. In FY26, there will be circuit breaker for Silver Lake. Elementary circuit breaker, we anticipate, will decline in FY26, but the expenses will also decline. In one of our meetings with Halifax Town officials, they expressed concern over not, potentially not meeting net school spending, because the Halifax budget, for example, had decreased by a considerable amount. And so Sarah has put in a call to Rob O'Donnell regarding net school spending and that concern raised by Halifax. So tomorrow, we are going to be meeting with the elementary principals to review the staff and salary lines with them. We are going to update the Silver Lake budget and elementary budgets and redo the assessments. Special education is updating FY25, and we postponed the budget workshop until next week, and our intention is to get materials to school community members by Tuesday afternoon in order for them to review in advance. Part of the documents will include multi-year comparisons, not only for Silver Lake, but for all the elementary schools as well. A presentation to walk through the changes, and a visual to help explain the increases to assessments and the Silver Lake budget in general.
Any questions?
May I just ask, do we know of any changes that are hopefully positive to the budget based on the information that we'll be reviewing?
For example, yes, we, we, we were informed this week that technology has received a grant, so we'll be able to take a reduction for technology hardware, for example. In our favor will be more refined circuit breaker applied to the elementary schools. Those are some examples.
Any other questions?
Haven't found any big bags of money yet.
That's what I was implying.
Right, again, if I found a $4 million mistake somewhere, I would have been dancing around with balloons and telling the whole world.
Well, if we see you out there with balloons, we'll know.
Well, I just want to again acknowledge and thank everyone for the extraordinary amount of work that's gone into this effort and continues to go into it. You know, the one thing I can say is, you know, a comforting thought is that this is, this is an albatross year, this is a unique year. We haven't had one like it before, and we should not have one like it after, we just have to get over this hurdle. And I think I speak for everyone saying how much we appreciate the extraordinary efforts that are going into this.
Thank you.
And look forward to next, next week. I think we'll, we'll have some nice progress with some, you know, the data that's going to be shared with us, so, thank you.
Did I or the town officials, or any of the town officials express concern that we won't be able to pass this in any way, shape, or form, or it really just didn't matter, it's still built, the numbers?
I think, given the assessments where they were, the initial.
Right.
The initial preliminary budget, yes, there's concerns because they would require overrides.
Thank you.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. All right, nothing under new business, nothing under old, reports of special committees, SLEA.
Well, good evening, everybody. I'll talk about the high school schedule just for a moment first. So, you know, I'm teaching at the middle school, so I haven't been too involved in the process, but I will tell you that I have received zero member concerns about it, which is a great sign of support, as I'm sure you can imagine, people will tell me if they have concerns. You know, this is the schedule actually similar to what I had myself when I went to high school Silver Lake, and the ability to take that one extra elective is huge. It matters a lot for some of our programs like Ban Two, because, you know, if you've only got one elective, you've got to make some tough choices, and with that extra elective, there's, there's a lot of different benefits. So I'm glad to hear it seems like there's support in the committee for that. I think that would be a great thing for our students. One thing I do want to piggyback on that was mentioned in the presentation, kind of tied to what I was just saying about electives, is it may not be practical to run that schedule if, if they do lose any teachers. I am very concerned with the Tier Two and Three budget cuts that were presented as possibilities last time, all being staff cuts, and so, you know, I, I hope that none of that is going to have to come to pass. Paula was just saying about this being an albatross year, and, you know, I, I think that being the case, I would urge the committee and administration to think about some things that we might not generally consider for the budget, like, for example, if we do need a budget override or something like that, rather than cutting programs, because as we know, you know, once the programs are cut, they tend to not come back, even if the budget situation does change. And I do want to also echo what Paula says, said earlier, I also appreciate the hard work of administration, Sarah, Jill, and also the school committee, to look very carefully at this, and, you know, I'm hoping that we'll have some good news next week. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Administrative review?
No updates.
Okay. Chairman's correspondence, I have none. Legislative agent?
So I passed over my report last time, but I think it's imperative that you have some of the information that I have in order to make informed decisions next week. So I'll start with my trip to Washington DC. There was some good news there, specifically in terms of large capital projects that have environmental positive impacts. Schools are now eligible for federal tax rebates, even though we don't file federal taxes usually. This was part of both the American Rescue Plan, also known as ZARCA, and Inflation Reduction Act. Senator Mark is leading up this charge, and it's non-competitive grants that has an infinite source of revenues, so there's no cap to the amount of schools or entities that can approach these. Possibly we can use these for some of our capital projects here at Silver Lake that can help offset our local operating budget and our draw from E and D. So that was good news. The concerning news is there is a group of legislators in the House who have tried to basically dismantle chapter funding. At one point, Chapter One, which we referenced earlier today, is one of our ways to do interventions for Tier Two and Tier Three students, had a preliminary that suggested to cut by 60%. Right now, they're negotiating with a number of 40% cut, and Title Two, which is how we pay for some professional development services, was zeroed out in the federal budget. In addition to that, I don't know if many of you are aware, the federal government hasn't even bothered to do their work and file an FY24 federal budget, they've just been working off continuing resolutions, and they're supposed to have FY25 done by July 1. In July, in July 1's outline right now, they don't have any funding for E-rate funding. E-rate is how we pay for some of our internet connectivity, some of our ARIO highs, some of the T1 lines that we put into school over the time. That is a needs-based funding mechanism, so unfortunately, this means a lot of our low-income students in the state are going to lose their access to the internet as other schools in the state are starting to lean heavily into using AI in classrooms, like the equity implications are ridiculous to the state budget. We haven't missed, we haven't met a single month of forecast in the current fiscal year for revenues at the state level. It's been abysmal. Governor Healy, I don't know where she came up with her number for House Two, her, her first best of the state budget, it was way more aggressive than I thought it was going to be. I'm extremely concerned moving forward, especially after we get the April report, which comes in like May 3rd or 4th, that's when all the income taxes come in. Last year was abysmal. I'm extremely concerned with what that looks like. That will be prior to the consensus budget coming out of committee and being sent to the governor. I'm afraid that the governor's budget may not be before this year, as it traditionally is. Very often, the House and the Senate, they add their little pieces in, can shine their, you know, medals, get some accolades from people back home, I don't know if they're going to be able to do it. Governor Healy's already using one-time funds to supplement the number she put out there. And, I mean, I know I'm saying, I think it's going to get worse, I was just at the state house testifying in front of the Ways and Means Committee, asking them to please reconsider the adjustment for inflation that they used in the Chapter 70 formula this year. They use a 1.35% inflation index. Anybody seen their inflation only go up to 1.35%? So I am fighting and continuing to argue for us, as you may have seen, regional transportation was funded around 80%, statutorily, it's supposed to be funded at 100%. We continue to call on the legislature to fund specialty transportation reimbursement at the same 75% level that we see from traditional circuit breaker, one of the reasons why we're seeing some of the deficits in our local budgets, which will become deficits in our budget next year, is because they only funded specialty transportation at 57% last year. The minimum increment is $30 per student, continuing to advocate for $100, and one of the sad things that's happened is 6,700 students in the state of Massachusetts are no longer considered low-income students. Now, that might sound like a win, maybe some people who've done poverty, it's actually a reclassification of what low-income students is because the pandemic era, extraordinary relief, just went away. So there's a lot of schools right now in Massachusetts who are seeing an increase in their foundation budget, but actually seeing a decrease in the Chapter 70 funding, which is leading to some schools' net school spending requirement that the state going up, but they're not seeing enough funds coming from the state. With Proposition 2 and that plus net growth in your town, you can't meet that minimum spending. So Halifax isn't the only town that has complaints with the state revenue about what their net school spending number looks like, and the inability for the locality to meet that requirement in certain cases. So the fight is on, I continue to meet with our legislative, our legislative delegation, I'll do the best I can, but considering we're not in a recession right now, this is the worst state budget I have ever been a part of in my entire town. It harkens back to what 2008, 2009 felt like, even though we're not in the middle of the crisis. It's, it's strange, it's disflattered.
Your story was much better last year.
Yep.
Which is shocking, it's one year, and then now the next is.
I want to acknowledge the hard work of our state representatives and our state senators who represent our district. They still managed to get us a $750,000 increase over last year's money, which I did not think we were going to see this year. So quite substantial funds for our schools, we're one of the lucky ones, but as I've said before, we'd like to get more of the state revenue, just so I can help take care of our localities, our three towns in our communities, and the tax areas that are my neighbors.
Yeah, agree. Thank you for that very detailed report. Negotiations, we have not met. Pat, obviously our colleague is there this evening. Policy?
No.
Nope. Safer?
Safer, which stands for Safety Facilities Fees and Revenue, because a lot of people probably don't know that. We had a lengthy discussion tonight, we talked about all four of those things. We got our sharp pencils out and erasers in some cases, and we were able to purr back our plan, proposed capital plan, by a substantial $400,000 that we're going to use to move, move to a different focus, due to the fact that we feel we need a little bit better planning, and our House Doctor was a discussion, and I think that's going to give us a little bit better way of looking at our facilities and moving forward with a little bit better of a plan. So some of those things kicked down the road, but we were able to get some of our services accomplished in-house, to our credit of our facilities director and our business manager that have been able to take that time, that little time that they have, to be able to focus on that. So overall, I think we're in a good spot, and it's good to be, we appreciate having the entire slot, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Treasures report?
No.
We have no warrants tonight. Yes, that's going to be part of the item 13.
We don't have any.
Right.
Item, are you done with your list? There's still Union 31. So item 13 on the list, which is.
Well, sorry, Union 31. No, me.
Well, let's just talk about the plan for next Thursday, so everyone's on the same page.
So I had asked Karen before the meeting, and Paula, if it would be possible, if we all post for 5 o'clock next week, all of the county committees, as well as the joint committee, just so that we can have fluid discussions throughout our time together, and make sure that all points are covered, and quorums are protected. Is that, is that okay with everyone that's a Union 31 member, to post for 5 o'clock? Thank you.
And as the chair of one of the local school committees, I thought it was important for us to, to post all of the school committees for the entire evening. That was a conversation that the chairs had, to make sure that we can fully participate without any violation of the meeting law, and any of the conversations that happen next Thursday at this location. So if I have a forum of linked school committee members, I will call that discussion, and I will not adjourn until we're done with all of the business we need, and I believe Halifax and Kingston intends to do the same.
No, it's, it's a smart way. No, it's, it's a smart way of approaching the meeting.
Now, is that virtual or in person?
It's in person.
Yeah, it's going to be in person now.
Okay.
We need to be able to look each other in the eye and make some of these conversations.
Okay. Warrants? Yes. Silver Lake warrants are due March 14th, and I'll have those with me next week for signatures. Very good. Thank you. Alrighty then. Dates to remember: next week again, the 14th is our joint working session to, to work with the budgets. It will, again, this is virtual. It will now be in person. We made that change today. The 29th is Good Friday. No school?
No school.
April 11th, the next joint school committee meeting, and then the next Silver Lake meeting after that. Alrighty, folks. As always, thank you so much, and see you next week. Make a motion to adjourn.
So, back.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.